Good evening, the Montgomery County Board of Education combined Board meeting is now called at order. We have Reverend Willie Welch from the First Baptist Church of Greater Washington Park here to lead us in the invitation.
Yes, great, our great God, we do thank you for this day and all of your blessings. We thank you for all the opportunities brought our way. We pray now, God, as we gather in this place, to take care of the King's business, that all things will be done decent and in order. We pray that you would direct our path. We thank you for these board members, we thank you for our superintendent, we thank you for the staff of MPS that work so hard to take care of our children. We pray now, God, in this season of remembrance, that we will forever remember the sacrifices that you made for us, and that we will also offer ourselves in sacrifice. In your name we pray, amen.
Reverend Welch, we appreciate that. We do have one with all seven board members in attendance. Do I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Madam President, I move that we approve the revised agenda.
Would you like a second?
I second it.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the election of Board President and Vice President, and so I'm going to give this over to Mrs. Ellen.
Good evening. The Montgomery County Board of Education with seven board members in place will proceed with organizing the board leadership, specifically for the roles of President and Vice President. I will now open the floor for nominations for Board Presidents.
Madam President, Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Robert Quarterfield.
I second the motion.
Are there other nominations? If there are none, we will close the nomination for MPS Board President. By virtue of there being only one nomination, Mr. Robert Quarterfield is acclaimed as President of the Montgomery Public Schools Board of Education. Okay? I will now open the floor for nominations for MPS Board Vice President.
Ms. Ellen, I would like to nominate Durden Dean.
Okay. Durden Dean has been nominated for Vice President of the MPS Board. Are there other nominations?
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Lisa Keith.
Are there other nominations? We are now ready to take the votes for Vice President. Our first nominee is Durden Dean. May we have a show of hands for Durden Dean as Vice President? There are three votes for Durden Dean. May we have a show of hands for Dr. Lisa Keith? There are four votes for Dr. Keith. This is a majority. So at this time, Dr. Lisa Keith is acclaimed as Vice President of the Montgomery Public Schools Board of Education.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Ready to take the nomination.
Before we start, I'd like to say, first of all, I'd like to give honor praise to Lord Philo, who has entrusted me to be Representative District Six, Board of Education. Certainly, I appreciate the support from my family, for being supportive of me, and for the Board to nominate and reselect this Board. I certainly appreciate this Board, and I will continue to work in a unified manner to drive the mission of Montgomery Public Schools, and that is to certainly engage, educate, and inspire children to be successful in college, careers, and young. Every challenge is a success, and that's what we are driving for. And I appreciate all of you this evening. At this time, we will continue our regular meeting. The next item on the agenda, citizens' comments. We don't have any, thank you. Well, superintendent's report.
Yes. You have a couple of documents that are attached by a clip. If you would take a look at those with me. Can you pull that picture up? I want to acknowledge, of course, our school board, staff, community, Reverend Welch, and other guests that are with us tonight. I want to begin with a commendation for BTW students and IMPACT students who collaborated for that art project that you see there on the board, for the 200th anniversary of Montgomery. BTW students came up with the diagram, and IMPACT created it, and it was presented today, and everyone was just very thrilled with how it turned out. So we want to congratulate them for how they worked together on this project. Hopefully, we can get them in here and say that to them face to face. I want to move into Goal One regarding our strategic plan to ensure every student is college and career-ready upon graduation. Really excited about virtual school program and their striking success. We have our first two early graduates from the program. These are students who have basically completed all of their credits as juniors going through the virtual program, and this is just a testament of what it's going to be like, the opportunities that we're able to provide for the children. So I'm really excited. They're both college-bound, and we look forward to seeing them graduate early. The A-through-F report card, I just wanted to remind you that that report card is due out this month. They will be, the report cards will be reflective of each elementary and middle school's performance related to achievement, learning gains, and local indicator, and each high school's performance related to graduation rate, local indicator, and student achievement. I gave you an attachment. If you would look on the back, it says, "Plan 2020: Accountability." This shows you the way that the systems report card would be presented. The indicators are learning gains, student achievement, graduation rate, and local indicator. And we will receive scores, percentages, in regard to each of these areas. As a matter of fact, you already see both a weighted and an unweighted percentage, and you also see the percent of that score indicating what value that particular indicator will have for us. For instance, if you look at the local indicator, our system decided that we would have each school to work on indicators related to improving discipline situations in the schools. And so we got, each school did a project that had them focusing on discipline in the schools, and they were able to earn a score based on where they started and where they ended up. And you can see here, the local indicator for the whole district is 100%. We are thrilled about that kind of improvement, but it only counts for 5% of the total score. There is not a total score for December of 2016. You will only see that in December of 2017. So if, I just wanted you to be ready to take a look when this information comes to you. You can use this guidance to study and know what you'll see on each individual school's report card, these same indicators. If it's a high school, you'll see the graduation rate indicator. If it's not, you'll see the other three. So, just for your information. Any questions about this? That second page shows the locals indicators for each school, and in the very last column, you can see how many points each earned in working their discipline situations. Any questions about that? Okay, moving forward. Goal Two, to ensure every education professional is well-prepared, resourced, supported, and effective. I'm bringing forward my evaluation goals for this upcoming year. This is for 2016, 17, and 17, 18. I have completed the self-assessment, and I'm going to be producing a growth plan that deals with Standard Four, Organizational Management, Standard Five, Curriculum Planning and Development, and Standard Six, Instructional Management. Burnett Nettles is here, and I'm going to let her make comments about that evaluation process.
Good evening. You were provided in your superintendent's, in your board member's packet, a copy of the evaluation instrument. Just as a reminder, the evaluation instrument developed in 2004 is a combination of standards that Alabama has chosen to adopt, and so the instrument itself has bases in the Alabama Standards for Instructional Leaders, and the Advanced Ed Standards for Quality School Systems, which is the accreditation process, and in the American Association of School Administrators. There are eight standards. Standard One is Leadership and District Culture. Standard Two is Policy and Governance. Standard Three, Communications and Community Relations. Standard Four, Organizational Management. Standard Five, Curriculum Planning and Development. Instructional Management is Standard Six. Standard Seven is Human Resources Management, and Standard Eight is Values and Ethics of Leadership. We match the process of the superintendent's evaluation to the process that Alabama adopted for their certified personnel. So there's a self-assessment portion, where the superintendent goes through the evaluation instrument and determines what areas that she will work within during the course of the school year. And it's actually the course of the school year and the contract period, so that evaluation, that our professional learning plan is a two-year plan. The next step is to develop that professional growth plan, and then it's implemented over the course of the two years. But adhering to the contract, adhering to the contract, there is a benchmarking at the end of the school year, this current school year, and then there is another benchmarking in December of the following year, and that matches the terms of the contract. Are there any questions or concerns? Mrs. Smith, when you have an opportunity, if you want me to go into further detail of the document and all of its processes and how it works, I will, if you would let me know. The process is also electronic at the end of the year, which makes it very easy for all of the board members to look at the supporting documentation and then provide a rating. And then that rating is created through an Excel spreadsheet to create the final scoring at the end.
All right. Yes, ma'am. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We can move on. Okay. The next item on our agenda is to receive this information on the A.T. School Medical Advisor Agreement, Ms. Dorothy Rogers.
Good evening. I think all of you have a copy that you've looked at. I was just asked to talk a little bit about what Dr. Raven does. He is our, the actual medical advisor that's in place now. He has been in place since 2005. He oversees programs such as the A.T. protocol for the system. He's also available anytime we have questions or need some guidance regarding high-risk infections like meningitis and TB. So he's kind of our call-to-do, Doctor, should we need medical advice? That's it. Are there any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Next, under received information, TCU change order by Mr. Donald Dotson.
Madam Chair, the superintendent, you should have in your packet, change order number two for TCU Program Management for our Phase III project, which consists of the Lamb High School, IMPACT at the Mall, and the Park Crossing addition and athletic fields. As you recall, in November of 2014, you approved change order number two, number one, rather, that expired in September of 16th, September 30th of 2016. This change order comes for their services to the completion of the Lamb program, which will end, which should be completed in May of 2017. So their contract will take them until May of 2017 for that particular completion. Park Crossing is actually going past that date as well, because we projected completion of Park Crossing for January for their addition, for the additional pod, as well as for the athletic fields as well. I will leave any questions.
Mr. Dotson, when is the final completion for Lamb? I know they pushed it back, so...
May, May of 2017.
So it will be like pre-occupy, or whatever it's called?
Yes, ma'am. Our expectation is that they will have a summer operation out of the new building.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. One of my questions was, just for clarification, the increase of price, what contributed to the price increasing, based off of what I read? Unless I misread, but just please explain.
Your price increase for the services is prorated on what you see as the original sum, what we have, that would end in September, September 30th of 2016, is prorated price to carry through that particular date of May, I'm sorry, June, May of 2017 for their services. And instead of this price is for their services, management services. Also, of note, this is not any additional funds that you will see coming out of the general fund. These funds that we were able to accumulate through VE and through the project, as you will see it as well. So we're still on budget with the sums, with the funds available to cover the $270,000 for their price for their continuation. I think the only funds that we're going to put into the project will be those funds, the items that we had in place prior to Phase III going into play. That was the actual additions at Park Crossing, where we did drive work, if you recall, prior to Phase III coming into place. That was in progress, once Phase III started. We shipped that over to TCU. Also, we had contracted for the classrooms. If you recall, we made the additional classrooms, where the career tech rooms, we made nine additional classrooms. That was $400,000 that we were actually paying for. We shifted that over to TCU and to Phase III as well. Those happened afterwards, so we're going to recoup that money, since we were paying it anyway, to help with the offset of the Phase III budget. So there's no additional funds.
One additional question. What was the, what did the change order entail?
Just their services. Their project manager's services is what we're paying for, for them to manage the project.
And nothing is coming from general funds?
No, ma'am, none of this. None of this is coming out of your regular Phase III, which is the 33 million, of course, 27 million from the city and county, and our 6 million.
No further questions. Thank you, Mr. Dotson. Next, we have a week change next board update by Mrs. Dylan Nettles and Mr. Neil Henley.
Before we get started, there's a silver Lincoln, tag 747 ASC, that needs to move. It's blocking the driveway. Thank you.
Well, thank you for letting us all join you tonight to talk about the inaugural Weekend Network Night. I know many of you have the opportunity to join us at the first network night on November 17th at Sidney Linear High School. Before we get into the details, we're going to show you all a brief video, just kind of recapping the night, a few pictures that were selected and everything like that, so you can feel for what was taking place, and we'll be happy to share more. Montgomery's historic city with historic records and traditions. We often give a saying to take a story to a child, and that's really the foundation that the Weekend Network is built on. Supporting students and achieving academic excellence starts in the different parts where students live. We know the best school partners are the people we see when we walk right out the front doors of the school. Network Night is a space where every voice can be heard. Community members gather in their schools to discuss the needs, wants, challenges, and goals for their community. The power of Network Night is that everyone has something to offer, but you also never know what you may make nameless. Everyone who comes to encourage the boys to their goals, make a plan, and accept the challenge to make their duty in their schools everything that they vision they should fulfill. Connect the community, accept the challenge, no excuses. We believe with community support, our kids can. Please visit us at montgomeryed.org for more information.
So we wanted to take the opportunity to reflect with you on what took place and how Network Night came to be. Montgomery Education Foundation, Montgomery Public Schools, Office of Community Schools, and Title I Family Engagement had an opportunity to visit Birmingham and see the Rais Up Network that takes place in Birmingham. So through that, through that opportunity, we developed this grassroots organization to bring Network Night, or Network Night opportunity, here in Montgomery. So the network creates a space for all stakeholders to collaborate as a community, and then to look at their vision and goals, to collaborate their vision and those goals, in order to develop stronger and healthier schools, thereby developing a stronger and healthier community. The Network Night involves school leaders, administrators, community members, clergy, local businesses, local government representatives, a wide variety of people who are able to join in with us to develop that information.
So many of you are probably asking, what will the network do for Montgomery? And it was really important to us, as we researched this process and this model, to find a mechanism that we felt like would reach everyone. And so this was one of the reasons that we actually adopted this and started to develop it with Miss Henley for Montgomery Public Schools. The primary goal of the Weekend Network is, of course, to find that engaging, intentional community dialogue. And the words engaging, intentional are very important there, because we don't want this to just be another community conversation. We don't want this to just be another event that you show up to, and you feel like you leave, and you don't really know the next steps, you don't know what the outcomes will be. This is about action while you're there. We wanted to be at the epicenter of our neighborhoods, and we're fortunate here in Montgomery to have real community schools. We have schools that are right in the deep into our neighborhoods, and there's no reason that those shouldn't be meeting places where all these stakeholders can come together, present their ideas, their goals, identify the challenges and struggles that they have, but also start moving towards those, like I mentioned, of real action.
So creating the space. Our Network Nights are very well-designed and scripted. Our Network Nights, we will have five during the second semester. Each one will be on a Thursday night at 5:30 PM. They will primarily be taking place at Lemire and South Lawn, but we do have an opportunity to have Network Nights at churches or other community bases. We have offered a free dinner for all of our participants, as well as free childcare. And each of the Network Nights is facilitated by a network host, which is either a Montgomery Public School staff member or a Montgomery Ed Foundation staff member, each who has been trained in how to move through the night.
Now, if you look at page two of the larger packet report, you'll actually see a breakdown of this model. But these are each of the steps that we go through during each of the night. Each segment lasts a certain amount of time, depending on what happens during that segment. But you'll see at the beginning, and I'm sure you saw the pictures, we first call them into a circle, and that means everyone will get around, and everyone is facing all of the other participants who are there. That's another very intentional part of this process, is we want everyone to feel a part of the collective. We start off by sharing the Now While section, good news, we want the energy to be great, we want the room to feel engaging, we want everyone to know that they have a chance to have their voice heard, and that's the first requirement of the evening, is everyone has to share something good, positive. It could be the smallest thing, like I, we have a lot of people that say, hey, I made it here this evening. And we had a lot of people say, we had students that say, oh, I got an A on my test this week, or I got accepted to college. I mean, all kinds of good news, and those are the things that make us feel uplifted and get the night going on a positive note. In the Share Care segment, we actually had each, we had community members in the room identify the six topics that they want to discuss right there that evening. And so we take those down, and we then break them off into small groups, and they can go to any small group that they would like to, and they can discuss those topics for 20 minutes. And that 20 minutes, though, we also have some expectations. They're supposed to talk about maybe some goals that they have, maybe some new projects that they want to work on, but they're also expected to come out of those with some tangible next steps. And so we have note takers in each group that are kind of guiding the conversation and capturing the highlights of what they're talking about, so that when they come back together with the whole collective, they can share that out with everyone. And we follow up on those, and we record those internally as well. During the Community Connect section, we're going to go into a little bit more detail about that later, but that is when the matches happen. We're going to describe to you what some of those matches look like, but those can be those individual requests or those individual offers that all of us, I think, have to share when we come together in that way. And then, of course, we ended off by match and act, which is where there's that face time for them to actually talk about where we go from here.
So recapping the event, we had a minimum, well, we had at least 80 participants. We did have a variety of people who came in who did not sign in, but we had 80 people who actually signed in. 100% of those people said that they had either students that are Montgomery Public School students, or they know Montgomery Public School students. They know Montgomery Public Schools students. And then, within the group of people that we had attended, we had over 20 diverse groups that attended. We had churches, we had Montgomery Public School employees and administrators and principals, we had the police department, we had bonds, we had local representatives, we had businesses, churches, and parents, all in this collective space. And then the majority of participants agreed that they did benefit from having come to Network Night and walked away with something tangible, and that they would attend again.
And you can see more details of those results on page four of the report as well. These were some of the topics that were discussed during the Share Care segment. So each of the small groups were hosted around one of these topics, and this was something that, once again, a person, a community member, stakeholder in that room proposed these topics as something they wanted to discuss that night. We had no influence, we had no idea, in fact, what they will say, they want to talk about. These are things that they come in, and I think are fresh on their minds and hearts, and so this is something that I think is amazing about this process, is that we don't influence any of it, and it's about bringing in what they have weighing on them that weekend, that night, when they come in the room.
We just provide the facilitation.
Yes.
So during the Community Connection, which is the culminating piece, each participant has an opportunity to make an offer, to make a declaration, or to make a request. And so during that time period, we had over 20 matches. We had job opportunities, scholarships. One young lady said, I need a job. Someone in the audience said, well, if you come and you tutor for me, I'll pay you. So right then and there, a girl walked away with a job. Financial assistance, after-school enrichment opportunities, all those things. We're developing a community calendar, so all those things resulted at this one event.
So the follow-up is key to this process, and so there's a lot that happens in that room, but it can't just be, okay, well, we had a break meeting, and then now what? So there's a lot of things that we do internally between OCS and... So there's a lot of things that we do internally, um, between OCS and the Montgomery Education Foundation to track what happens and what the outcomes are, and you'll see, um, some of those reflected in your report just from the night that we had a little less than two weeks ago, I now believe, so. Um, but also, there's a lot that's expected of those who are, are coming. And I shouldn't even say a lot, there's, I think, a minimum, but it's always what they kind of offered themselves to do when they came into the room. So, um, participants are encouraged, of course, during that time to make that face time to, to offer what they can, but it's all about what they can. No one's forcing their hand, and no one's telling them that they have to do anything. But if you're sitting in the room and you're hearing something like a student at Lemire High School who was looking for scholarship opportunities, or looking for assistance, uh, with an after-school job opportunity, you know that you can help make that happen. No one's asking you to do more than that, but to help make it happen with the resources that means that you have to do so. And that's, I think, the magic of the community connection part here. Um, and then it's about building authentic relationships. When I was talking to, uh, one of the principals who was there, uh, Ms. Winston at South Lawn Elementary, one of the things she said that she thought was going to be so important in, um, bringing something like this to her school was that she feels there needs to be more personal relationships and connections that are happening between people in the community so that they feel like they can come in together and help and assist with efforts that she needs to make happen at her school, that it isn't just going to be on them, and there is no one individual that is responsible for making everything happen, but that it's really a unit and that they're moving on these plans together. Um, and this is the example that, uh, Camille, um, just mentioned, who, um, with a student who needed scholarship assistance, and we did follow up on that and heard that she was able to get the job at the local church, and they gave her a five-hundred-dollar, um, scholarship for just helping after-school, um, at the church each day.
So, um, one of the things that we wanted to do is we wanted to know what people were thinking and how they felt about the event after it took place. And so an anonymous, um, network attendee identified that they had, that they thought the turnout was wonderful, and it was, to a point where we were not, uh, expecting as many people, um, that, as that arrived, and so we had to make some adjustments. The room was, or we were in the entryway of the school, and we were just amazed at the number of people who turned out and who were willing to participate in this positive change. Um, Dr. Williams, um, said, "This was the easiest thing I've done with the biggest payout." He had people coming into his building, um, who'd lived in Montgomery for years, who had never stepped in, stepped foot in Lemire, who finally, you know, after being in Montgomery for twenty-five years, finally had an opportunity to step into Lemire and see the beauty of the building, and also, um, take the opportunity to say, "Hey, well, when can I come in and volunteer, and what more can I do to help support the school?" So there were a lot of conversations going on. Um, Sergeant Mackey said that, he's a community resource officer, and he said that he goes to a lot of meetings, he's part of Bonds, and so he's around, uh, with a variety of community, uh, meetings, but rarely does he see action take place the way that it took place at the Network Night, where people are following up and people are actually making offers and really willing to give of themselves and of their resources to help someone else.
And you saw, of course, that we had some feedback there mentioned from Dr. Williams. I just want to point out, that was actually came in our rapid fire, split the text place immediately after the Network Night, and our research and development coordinator actually immediately meets with the principals after these and gets their immediate feedback. What are your takeaways? What do you think was good about tonight? What was negative? Because we want to immediately start making those adjustments and fixing that as soon as we can, um, and optimize all the time that we have to do so. Um, and so that was something he felt was really, that was his immediate feedback. He felt like this was really easy for him and that he would, he would do it again, we plan to. Um, and so the next one will actually take place at South Lawn Elementary. Uh, we want this to be something that we can do in our community schools, that we can do in our non-community schools, because we see this as a tool and a resource for our school leaders, and you heard that from Dr. Williams, it didn't require much on his part at all, but this is a partnership between, um, Camille's office and, um, of course, Montgomery Education Foundation, and we feel that we're facilitating everything that it takes, um, for that to happen for them as easily as possible, and when we come in, everything is set up, they just have to attend, and they can have a really good payout from it. Um, and then we plan to continue these through the rest of next semester with five total, um, during the spring semester.
And lastly, we would like to invite each and every one of you here to attend one of our Network Night events. Again, the next one is January nineteenth, five-thirty at South Lawn, so please come out, find out what it's about, tell your friends and your family, and come out and participate and be part of the change.
We have any second questions?
How, how do you get your participants? Does you, I mean, I may have missed that, are you, are you on the radio? What, what do you do to get them to come? Cause I, I didn't...
We send out letters, we were on...
WSFA.
We were on WSFA, we did Facebook, we did Twitter, we...
We have a, a multifaceted, uh, I guess you could say promotional plan, but it's a little bit of a...
We focused around Lemire and the Lemire feeder pattern, so we invited all the churches that surround Lemire, we invited some of the businesses that surround Lemire, um, to make sure we were reaching out to them.
So was the majority of your participants Lemire, though, is what I'm saying? Are the people that go to Lemire, I'm not being negative, I'm, I'm just saying that they, do other people know other than Lemire? You know, it's not a specific Lemire thing.
No, because we were on WSFA. We also had quite a few people from the Cloverdale community, um...
We, yeah, we utilize, um, organizations such as Bonds through the city, uh, to identify the specific neighborhood associations, um, and so we can get the information to them about what's going to be happening right there in the neighborhood, so we had a great turnout. And I think that was actually one of the things in the survey that someone mentioned was they were surprised at the presence of some of the neighborhood associations at this. I don't know why that may be the case, but I think that was a great comment to hear, uh, that that was something that they don't feel that always happens, and that you were able to actually get so many, um, of those representatives in the room.
Also, I might make, make mention that Torrey University was also with us partnering by providing some of the resources that we needed, um, there as well.
Oh, I just wanted to commend you on what you're doing. It is a delight to see, uh, Ms. Finley's staff with, uh, with your organization going out there. There's been a cry from the community for a long time, so it's good to know and it's good to see the, um, neighborhood associations participating. So thank you, thank you.
And just to piggyback on what she said, that's great. I think it's going to increase our awareness of that community engagement, and I do expect and I think that things are going to happen. Uh, maybe we can even grow it, yep, not just for the Lemire feeder pattern, but common has to be a factor, and we want to engage all.
We already have gotten some requests, I will say, we've gotten requests from Car Val Elementary, I think we're going to get more. Hopefully, as this takes up, but, yeah, we want to spread this.
Yeah, I'll probably remember that Thursday, um, I got January nineteenth.
Yeah, and it's scalable, and I think that's what is a great thing about this, is it can go as big as we want it to, and, um, I'll say, but a- after each and every one of these, you will, the, the full report that you receive, as, as well as the, um, one-page document, you will get one of those after every one of these, because this is about being data-driven, as well as it is just actually having the conversation. So you'll be getting a full report and seeing the outcomes from these after every single one.
Well, thank you, Dylan and, uh, Camille, Grace Finley, and Ms. Natalie. Next item on the agenda is considered for approval from the aid personnel report, certified as well as, uh, support personnel, Ms. Finley. Motion.
Before we do that, you received, uh, a replacement page two. You would take a look at that replacement page two, and I'd like to pull number fifteen. Uh-huh, uh-huh. This is certified. That's it, that's it. Number fifteen, if we would pull that. And then I'd like to make the recommendation that we approve the certified personnel minutes and the support personnel minutes.
Do we have a motion to approve both, the certified and the support personnel minutes?
I move that we subdue and deny the recommendation on both the certified and support personnel.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, since we moved a second that we uphold the superintendent's recommendation on personnel report, are there any vote? In fact, it's, they're in a discussion. Those who are in favor of the personnel report, let's see by short hands. It is unanimous, so the personnel report votes certified as well as certified.
Okay. I recommend the approval of the twenty-seventeen eighteen school calendar.
We have a motion to approve the twenty-seventeen eighteen school calendar.
Mr. President, I, I motion that we approve the...
We have a second.
Second.
Since we moved a property second, that we approve the twenty-seventeen eighteen school calendar, awaiting, um, discussion. Those who are in favor, let's see by short hands. All opposed is the same. It's carried by unanimous group, seven, four, eight, the school calendar. Board minutes, November fifteenth, twenty sixteen. Do we have a motion for the...
Madam President.
Motion for the board minutes, November twenty-fifteenth, sixteen.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt the board minutes for November fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen, as friendship. A second.
If we move a second that we approve the board minutes for November sixteen, fifteen, sixteen, are there any discussion? Those who are in favor, let's see by short hands. It is unanimous, so we accept the board minutes for November fifteenth, twenty sixteen. Next item is a TCU change order. Can we get a motion for the change order? Mr. President, I move that we approve the TCU change order.
Second.
It has been moved a second that we approve the change order by TCU. Then is there any discussion? Those who are in favor, let's see by short hands. It's unanimous that we accept the TCU change order. The ninth item on the agenda is that the executive session, and it's on potential litigation. Do we have a motion to move into the executive session?
We will be coming out with the vote, and it will be in executive session for about fifteen minutes, and I do certify that we are going into potential litigation.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we go into executive session, and there will be a vote coming out of the exa- executive session.
Have a second.
Second.
Since we moved a second that we move to executive session, those who are in favor, let's see by short hands. Uh, we have six votes. Those who oppose, one of us. Are we going to stay here? If we, we will remain here in the auditorium, and we ask that you, um, let's remove yourself for just a few minutes, fifteen minutes, you can turn back, we're about to have an executive session.